Inspire, physical culmination of the Ramsey County connection to order. Please join in on pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, and your starting on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
Lou Gunderson.
Set.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda, any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve as submitted. Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Gunderson.
Hello.
Thank you for joining us.
I've got a couple estimates here for blinds. They do the same thing as up on third floor, but these will be able to raise and lower, kind of like curtains in a way. They reflect the heat out and you can't see in. They're shiny on the outside, so you won't see in nearly as well. Got two estimates here. One for seventeen nine seventeen eighty from the glass shop and the other one, we're going to go with the gray silver because I see that one, even though it's a little bit cheaper, it is supposedly a better transfer of heat, as it says in the estimate here from the glass shop. Anyway, go with that one from Thompson's. Thompson's total, when you include that ten thousand eight hundred, they, we would have them remove existing blinds and install the new shades for the fifty two twenty and a hundred dollars for the miscellaneous things that came to sixteen one twenty. So I don't see any reason why we couldn't have Thompson's do second and third floor for the sixteen one twenty.
Was it second, third, or was it first and second?
Excuse me, first, did I say second, third, first and second?
First and second.
I guess I make a motion to approve that vote from Thompson's.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the bid from Thompson's, double sided glass and paint for the blinds on first and second floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, I've talked to a couple of you regarding third floor. The window film that was put on never should have been put on because that, when you put it on, the thermal window cracks soon enough. And my recommendation is that we take that off and go with blinds like we're doing on first and second floor. Because I've talked to both Thompson's and the glass shop and right away, both of them said that that film never should have been put on third floor. Because it comes in big rolls, I guess, and right on the roll, it says you don't apply to thermal windows. But that was the court of court. Went and got all that project together, writing anything about it until three days before they're going to put it on. So anyway.
Roger, what do you think it was done in that?
When?
I think about three years ago.
Yeah, about three years ago, three years ago, in the spring.
And we should just take it off?
Yes, because it's cracking the windows. We've got four windows cracked now.
The sooner the better.
Yes.
Sooner the better.
And then I think just getting estimates from Thompson's and the glass shop again to do the third floor.
With repair of the windows?
Or with, right, with replacing those four windows.
Are there, hopefully it's only, hopefully it stays at four.
Hopefully it stays at four.
Are there court facilities grants, like we've had in the past, that we could maybe tap for some of that since it's third floor in the court?
Yeah, but that wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do it until basically next year.
Okay, so we want to get it done now?
That's good.
Yeah, because the court facility grant you submit.
Ahead of time for the next year?
Ahead of time.
And they notify you by, it has to be turned in by December thirty first?
Uh, we don't find out until, yeah, you wouldn't be able to do it until next year.
Probably, yeah.
I'll make a motion to do it as quick as I can.
Care?
I'll say it.
Motion and a second to do third floor as soon as possible. Any further discussion?
We should add to the motion to go ahead and forward, we're billing it to the court of court or getting money out of the court of court? Not billing. How are you doing that about?
Well, usually it's the grant you apply for.
Yeah.
Yep, and like I said, that's the only way we've ever gotten any money out of them. And by going there, it wouldn't be until next year that you'd be able to do it.
Do that, huh, or not?
I'm fine with it. If it's going to save the windows, I think we just go ahead and get it done so you don't blow any more windows out.
Yeah.
If it's going to, if it's going to cost us some money, I mean, I would assume it's a similar amount of, it'd be half, close to half of the court that we had now.
I'll get that, I'll get that, I'll bring them to you when I get them.
Still get another eight dollars, something like that.
Roughly.
Just get it right.
I think we just study, we just get it right and do it now. But bring the estimate back when you get estimate, see what we got there.
And it might, might be worthwhile to put a policy in place about the courthouse that, you know, all decisions pertaining to the structural aspects of the building, structural slash exterior, whatever, need to be approved by Roger before they're done?
At least I have some idea that I have.
Just still yet, at least.
Please have a discussion about it.
If you have that put into a policy.
That's kind of it, I think. You know, and then that way, and then that way, if Roger sees something going on, he can say, hey, if you've got to stop it, permission said, this, that or the other, you know? Because if they really needed it done and you didn't want it done, they could always come to us.
We'll replace them on it, right? Any further discussion on the motion?
Are we going to pay that county loan?
Yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, Roger. Did you want to make a motion about investing, Roger, with that authority? Because we just discussed it just now, we didn't actually make a decision about that. Seems like that's what we would all like.
Yeah, do we need to formalize something at all?
Well.
I'm just saying.
Otherwise, it's just something that was said once.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, how would we formalize it and how would we formalize it? I mean, just didn't.
I can take a draft of something.
Yeah.
Human Resources holds policies and they have to bring that, but I can work with Brian to get something figured out.
For those entities that rent from the courthouse or rent space in the courthouse essentially, it would be good to get it into their rental contracts, their next door, too.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, something like this may never happen again, but we would avoid it ever happening again for sure if it was just in the rental policies and if you're an organ of the county, you also need to get it through Roger.
I'd like to see, excuse me, state attorney take a passage, just putting something together that would, it doesn't have to be complicated, but something that, you know, that you could insert in the contracts as well as just a policy we could.
For all tenants of the building?
For all tenants of the building, we could approve as a commission and then just be the standard order then. I think we'll, we've got a couple weeks, we need it, that should be fine.
Sure, we'll do.
One question, Roger, you didn't, third floor has figured it out that it didn't work?
Say that again.
People on the third floor that put those screens up, they all figured out it didn't work.
Well, technically it does work. The girls there, especially on the west side, have said, yes, it definitely keeps the heat out, but they can't have that stuff on the glass.
Just material for the project.
We don't want cracked windows.
No.
Well, it's just, yeah, you're capturing all the heat on the window instead of capturing it inside of the window and then you're just taking, turning a window and baking it.
Obviously, excellent.
Yeah.
Thermal expansion.
So do we have a motion on the floor for the creative policy?
Some.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
All right.
You got it.
Next up, Mr. Johnson.
I'll slide over.
Long Forestwood Center.
I'm coming with a few different hats for you today. The first one I'll start with is region to homeless coalition. I'm the president of the homeless coalition. I just want to ask the commission to not only share the word of us that we're trying to form, formalize the homeless coalition and start being more productive, but also encourage you to maybe attend a meeting on occasion. We do meet the first Thursday of the month at nine o'clock in the morning. Our first, our next meeting will be in July. I'm going to forget the date, the second, first, and when you need the first, except first Thursday, and it'll be at the Hope Center. It's also, we'll also make it available via Zoom, so if you want to attend remotely, you have that option as well. So we're just trying to get the region together and start collaborating. We really want to try and expand, get out of the smaller communities because obviously we have a lot of interest from people within Doubles Lake. We want to give more to the region. So that's all I have on the homeless coalition side of things.
Could you give Candy a notice on that and she can forward it to this commission?
Yep, I will do that.
For the meetings?
Yes.
Thank you. Good, I'm assuming that you don't always meet at the same location or?
No, right now I want to, I want to move it around, you know, and I'd like to actually get some meetings out into the communities, you know, out of the rural communities more, so that we can try and draw more people to go.
Sure. Yep, glad just let Candy know and so we'll get notified on where the location is and.
Right.
If we have time, we can try to make it, thank you.
I will do that. So I'll switch hats over to Safe, the president of the board for SAGE. And I have Melody DePlazas with me here today. She's our executive director and we're looking to just request consideration for another contribution next year to the SAFE program. Since Melody has come on as executive director, again, she has expanded the services we're providing and the quality of the services that we're providing within the region. And I think that we're only going to continue to see SAFE, what SAFE is able to do and the community grow. So with that, I'm going to give her an opportunity to kind of explain a little bit more on some of the things that she's been doing and that the program has done and give you some stats.
Thank you for letting me talk today. On behalf of SAFE Alternatives and our governing board, as you know, we serve a vital role in providing protection from domestic violence and sexual violence, including connecting victims with counseling, assisting with protection orders and other supportive services. SAFE serves Ramsey, Benson, Towner, Nelson, Eddy and Wells counties, along with collaborating with the Spirit Light Victim Assistance Program for that Spirit Light Nation. SAFE also provides an array of other programs and services to the community, which include Family Visitation and Exchange Center, where children can visit the non-residential parent in a safe environment. We have the Alternatives to Violence, where males and female offenders are learning how to have and sustain a healthy relationship. The Female Offender Course is actually classes are going to start in July. That is something new that we started. We also have a Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner and an Examination Room within our office setting. We are the second in the state to have that. This is where victims of sexual violence from ages fourteen years and older can go and receive a forensic exam by a certified state nurse. We also just hired another state nurse to do pediatrics of thirteen and under. She's taking her certification course right now for that and we'll be able to do those services as well. We also work closely with our county states attorneys, providing victim witness advocacy services. This allows SAFE to work with clients assisting them with crime victim compensation, victim impact statements, signing up for victim notifications and helping them through the judicial process from start to finish. SAFE relies heavily on our grant funding and fundraising for financial support. Most of the grants are reimbursable grants for services they are provided, for services after they are provided. This requires us to have a specific amount of money on hand to cover these expenses until they can be reimbursed. Additionally, these grants do not cover many of our overhead costs. Recent financial limitations have resulted in existing staff taking on additional responsibilities, raising their burden to unmaintainable levels. And due to this year's COVID-19 pandemic, we were not able to have any fundraisers like we've had in the past. So we're hoping that our community members and you along will support us. For comparison reasons, I'd like to show you just how much the pandemic has affected our area. So I'm going to give you stats from 2019 to 20 to 21, so you can see the comparisons of what has happened. So in 2019, we served one hundred and thirty seven victims of domestic violence. In 2020, that number went up to one hundred and eighty two. And in 2021, that's from January to June, January first to June first, we've served eighty eight, eighty three victims of domestic violence. In nineteen, we served twenty one sexual assaults, or in nineteen, I mean, in twenty, we served twenty six and so far, we've done sixteen sexual assaults. In 2019, we served thirty three families with four hundred and twenty seven bed nights. In 2020, we served thirty eight families with one thousand one hundred and forty three bed nights. In 2021, so far, we've served seven families with six hundred and twenty bed nights. And a bed night on the average cost is about five hundred and thirty dollars a day. We, in 2019, served, received fourteen crisis calls. In 2020, it was a hundred and ninety six and so far, we've received a hundred and six. So our numbers keep increasing. In 2020, a hundred and seventeen children were impacted by domestic violence. In Ramsey County in 2020, we served seventy nine clients, just in Ramsey County alone. And so far, we've done fifty one clients in Ramsey County alone. So we would like to continue to ask for that twelve thousand dollars that you have donated to us in the past for future.
Is that enough?
Well, I'll always say we can always use more, but.
Well, I mean, it's a relatively light bill for the important work that you've all do. So I just want to make sure, you know, are there more services that you, you know, that you have on your wish list? That if we funded you, not a lot more perhaps, because I think my fellow commissioners might have some things to say about that. But I'm willing to go up to bat for you for, you know, are there more things you could do with a few more thousand dollars?
Yeah, we are looking at wanting to do mobile advocacy, which is going out into the remote areas and the rural areas and traveling and providing advocacy services that way because we know a lot of our victims can't get to Doubles Lake or to the main cities and the other counties. So we are looking at wanting to start a mobile advocacy, which we would be the fourth in the state to do.
And it's, the grant funding that Mel's been able to get us is really sustaining us, but the concern is going to be that long term. You know, if we're going to be able to continue to get the amount that we are getting through the grants. So that's where, as far as the expansion goes, we're trying to be a little bit, you know, be smart about it so that we're not growing to the point where we can't sustain it with the grant funds that we have available. So that's there maybe, and as we've been talking to recently about trying to find maybe a better way to go about how we're coming out and asking for the money, you know, to, you know, because like, we're going out to all the counties. So Ramsey County is going to have obviously a larger share of the resources because we're not only stationed right here, but, you know, the other counties don't have the population. So they may not be contributing as much, but they're still willing to contribute. And so how, how can we justify the amounts that everyone's kind of throwing into the hat?
It would, I think, be nice to, to in the future, see like a total budget and breakdown of what you guys are spending money on, right? And then why it's important. I think in the future, that will also make any future commission, it will be easier to sell them funding you more. I mean, obviously, the statistics that you just mentioned show what a need there is.
Right.
How does, would sixteen thousand be better than twelve?
That would be very much appreciated. I mean, we, like I said, we've been expanding and enhancing our services. The Sexual Assault Exam Room has been wonderful. The Family Visitation and Exchange Center, we actually only receive the funding, we receive very little money for that and it's a huge need in this community. I mean, the closest one is Grand Forks for Visitation Center for families. So.
Are there specific startup costs for doing something like a mobile unit like you're speaking of?
We already have a vehicle that was donated through, like Toyota to us. So it would be just the upkeep of the maintenance of the vehicle, the gas and a staff person to go and do that advocacy work.
And if we're unable to find office space out in those communities, we may have to look at potentially renting space for the station. But I, right now, I think she's been able to working and get space available that we don't have to pay for.
That's good, I encourage you to keep doing that, but.
And we also provide, you know, it's not just the roof over the head. We also have transitional living apartments that we use because our emergency shelter is only thirty day stay. So if they're doing what they need to, to become self-sufficient, getting a job, trying to find that place, sometimes it takes them a little longer. We can put them in a transitional apartment, which they can stay up to twenty four months. With that, also, they can pay thirty percent of whatever money they're making. It goes into a savings for them, so then when they do find a place, they have that money ready for that first down, first deposit, first month's rent, last month's rent, however, it's needed because it's expensive to get into an apartment right away. Plus, if they have extra money, they can help get pots, pans, household goods and items, which we try to provide to them through donation. But we also have a food pantry. We also help provide any hygiene products, shampoos, toothpaste, diapers, wipes, formula. So we do provide a array of services. And everything's free for our clients.
Could you share with us what the other counties are giving?
We received twelve thousand from Benson and the other has been five thousand.
That's, we're expecting, we're expecting three thousand from Eddie County and three thousand from Dawson County.
For usage, that's probably not too bad. I mean, this is a painting. The, the only thing that I'm trying to wrap my head around is, obviously, I understand where you're coming from on long term, how do you continue to grant fund? I, I'm just looking at it from the aspect of the county is going to have some money available because those, that second round of COVID funds that are coming in are specific to pandemic-related obstacles. And one of the specific listed items is things like additional services rendered because of possible pandemic costs when it comes to mental health, when it comes to violence and advocacy for people that have undergone domestic violence, things like that. So maybe that would be an option. We, we might be able to tap some of those funds on one-time expenses if it's something like that. You are, you already have a vehicle, but, you know, maybe we could find a way to deutilize those somehow.
We do provide therapy services too, free of charge. We contact with Dr. Justin Solerstrom for those.
And we're going to see, we don't know exactly how those funds are going to be able to be utilized yet, but it's kind of getting hammered out here in the next, hopefully, the next little bit, we'll have some ideas, so.
Do you help to give us a, on a tap those funds? Which would be greatly appreciated.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, the thing that I look at is if there's going to be a lot of limitations on those, I would rather, rather find a way to utilize them in our community on things like SAFE or on, on, on efficient or affordable housing or any kind of way we can find to utilize those funds. I think is what we, you know, within reason, not like long-term expenses, but things that we can help to make things work. I think that's what we have to try to look at. So once we figure out how those funds can be utilized, I think it's something we need to stay in contact, but obviously we will.
Great, in the interim, I'll make the motion that we fund SAFE to the tune of sixteen thousand dollars.
I'll send the motion.
Thank you very much.
We have a minute.
I have.
Here we go, what?
For auditing purposes, can I have a letter of request with that in?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
You got just normal cash out there.
Right, right, I.
Yeah, I get, I got to cover it.
I have no doubt that they have a use for it, so.
Yeah.
Budgeted amount was?
Twelve previously for this 2021, but for 22, we'll base the budget off of sixteen thousand. So you're saying for the next year's budget?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yep. So I'll just leave it here.
Motion and a second to fund SAFE to the tune of sixteen thousand dollars. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll switch hats again.
So you got one more hat.
One more hat. So 2022 LEC budget information, I did send Candy out just a four-year comparison for the 2022 full budget. I just kind of wanted to go over it with you and ask, see if you have any questions. We'll start with the 9111, because that's kind of the one that led the process on how we went through the rest of our budgets. Things of note with the 911 budget is that our 911 revenues, so the revenues we collect from, out of the two dollars for every phone line is, it's trending down at a rate of around two and a half percent annually, contributing that, I think, just population leaving the area. We're also seeing a reduction, a continued reduction in the number of wired lines that we see. And I think we'll continue to see that trend downward. So on the revenue side, that's really the only thing that changes there. The revenues are going to be pretty consistent. On the expenses, we, we, as a part-time person, because we have an opportunity to hire someone who's interested in part-time work, so we have a part-time position to help offset some of the overtime, plus the amount of time that our supervisors are actually spending on the console instead of supervising. That's really the only differences that happens in 911. We, we did, one of the things on the expense side or the labor costs is we did, we were looking at PERS and we were actually, I think the board was going to be supportive of us moving into PERS until there was that bill late in the session where PERS's future was in question. I know it got defeated, but it made me scared and I don't feel we want to jump into that pool right now, so we're going to just continue on with our 457 meeting.
Well, I think they're still studying that in the interim, so it could potentially come up again.
Yeah, yeah, no, I fully expect we'll see it in the next session, so.
Can I ask a quick question, Roger?
Absolutely.
On the, on the wireless and wireless line cost on the, it's two dollars per line, correct?
Correct.
Is, and that's something we voted on as a county several years ago?
Six, five or six years ago.
Is two dollars the cap then?
That's the cap, that's the high jingle. So, and out of that two dollars, just so everyone's aware, ten percent is taken off the top by the, actually, it's five percent is taken off the top by the telephone companies. So they send us a dollar ninety out of that two dollars. We take twenty five percent of that, send it to the state for the CIREM program. So there was fifty cents of it. And then we send another five percent of it, goes off to the association of counties for their administration of the 911 program. So we get, you know, there's seventy cents that comes off, but we get a dollar thirty out of that. On the 911 side, you know, the thing to look at is, the key kind of is under the joint powers revenue. The number you have at the bottom there, the total, that's where our projected shortfall is on the 911 side. That's where we apply the cost share formula to, based upon usage in phone lines. The 911 side is a little bit more complicated than the LEC side, but that's where the rates are going to be for that. Any questions on the 911 side? Okay, so I'll move on to the general fund, the LEC side of things. On the LEC side, revenues, the things that I'll, that I'll kind of comment on is that all of our membership boards are based off of the three-year average. So we, for 2022, we'll use eighteen, nineteen and twenty. So the three-year incarceration average is how we determine those. And just to give some perspective, and actually, I've done another document. Uh, and just to give some perspective, and actually, I've done another document I printed out just for this board, uh, is, so for twenty twenty-one, we projected Ramsey County to have thirty-five and a half for an average daily population. Through the first four months of January through April, the actual average daily population for Ramsey County is forty-six point two. And we've actually, and for twenty twenty-two, based off of that three-year average, you're, you're projected out at thirty-seven point one. So I'm gonna pass these up, and this will be information that I think you guys will find useful and take someone's hand at all. So what I did is I took the average daily population, well, I'm getting the truth. Uh, the average daily population for, or the, the actual mandate numbers for Ramsey County for nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. And the reason I did this is I wanted to show the impacts of what the DOCR has done through COVID. Uh, so when you look at nineteen, that's gonna be a full year where Ramsey County paid for all of our mandates. And you'll see that for the year, the average daily population was thirty-five point five-six. In twenty twenty, when COVID hit in March, the DOC went to their mitigation plan where we had offenders that were staying in custody that were supposed to be going to the state pen for upwards of over a hundred days. Uh, and to where the DOC then was able to apply COVID funds to pay for those days, and so that Ramsey County didn't have to pay for those days. So you can see what the impact of the actual average daily population for Ramsey County was through twenty twenty and now through the first part of, of twenty twenty-one. Now, the mitigation plan for the DOCR is going to be expiring for the males on Friday. They'll no longer be paying that as of Friday. Tomorrow morning, we have all of our Ramsey County males are leaving for the state pen. So we won't have any more Ramsey County males in custody waiting to go to the state pen. And I expect that, once they are sentenced, we'll see that they'll be gone within a week.
How many is that, Rob?
How many do we have right now?
How many are getting sent tomorrow morning?
Tomorrow, we have, we have five going that are Ramsey Comneys. We have two females that went for Ramsey County on Monday. So we've got seven that will, that will be going off the speed. So you'll see, you're still, even when we're adjusting it for the DOCR, you know, year-to-date, you're still at forty point eight-five for an average daily population. And when you look at the numbers for, for June through yesterday, you're forty-nine point one. So, uh, and, and another stat that I threw out here because it's important and it's relevant is the average length of stay. In twenty nineteen, the average length of stay for an inmate was thirteen days. So far this year, it's twenty-six days. So if that's an indicator that the ones that we're seeing in jail are the ones that are committing more serious offenses and are having longer court processes or, you know, are actually experiencing sentences that they're having to stay within the facility.
So it's doubled?
It's doubled.
Is, is some of that because of the fact that the DOCR prisons were being captured, held, and without, sure, that was adjusted upwards somewhat, not, not a comfortable.
And, and as well as us helping the US Marshals now. So the Marshals generally are longer-term holds as well. Uh, and the number actually probably went down a little bit because they had a Ramsey County case that was, that we had in for sixteen months that was sent to the pen. Uh, and then we had a US Marshal that we'd had in for fourteen months or so that was transferred out. So those, those will impact and increase that a little bit, but still to see it doubling within two years is pretty, pretty extreme. So back to the budget side, uh, and talking about the revenues, and I can talk all day, so if you want me to hurry up, just let me know. Um, the US Marshals, the projections for the US Marshals, our contract revenues are conservative up until today. So we're, we're in the middle of having our DOCR inspection, and we've identified some things where we're gonna have to reduce our population a little bit so we can work on some staffing issues. And the population that's gonna be, uh, that we're gonna end up reducing is gonna be that Marshall population because we still need to provide for our local membership. Um, but just to give you an idea, so for twenty twenty-one, we projected an average daily population of eighty-two for the Marshals. From January through April, it was actually eighteen point five, and since April, we've actually been closer to twenty-five. Uh, and then for twenty twenty-two, we projected out at fifteen point one. So I don't have a three-year average to base out upon yet. That's why we're not using the three-year average for those projections. And I wanna keep it conservative because there are situations that come up where those contract revenues can just go away. And I don't wanna be dependent on those contract revenues until we've actually accumulated them and we have them in our accounts where we can contribute it towards future budgets. And I'll get to that again here in a little bit. So that's, that's what I've got on the revenue side. Uh, on the expense side, uh, the real big thing on the expense side is gonna be the food service. Our food service costs went, we projected up for this year at two hundred thirty thousand dollars. Uh, we're probably gonna, our, our food service costs went up fifty-one percent through our bid process last year for this year and into next year. So our actual food service cost for the LEC is gonna be around four hundred thousand dollars. Um, we've gotta come up with an idea on how we can reduce those costs, and that's gonna primarily revolve around us getting a kitchen to be able to provide our own food service. We pay, I'm gonna be paying over a hundred thousand dollars for a year in the food service than Cass County does, and they run three and a half times the population we do. So we've gotta find a way to be able to reduce those costs somehow.
In three years, our food service doubled.
Yeah.
Two oh two thousand, two hundred two thousand, uh, one, projected.
We stay in.
Yeah.
Contracting it all.
Uh, the other thing on the, on the expense side, labor costs, we did add another lieutenant's position to the jail, which apparently vacant, a vacant. And we did add a part-time R N position for our nurse. Our nurses need to get some free and clear time out of their allocation, so it being one for seven, three sixty-five.
Could you refresh my memory of how many, uh, staff were back in corrections?
So this here is projecting out with sixteen line staff. So that's four sergeants and twelve correctional officers. That doesn't include what we would now have for two lieutenants and the captain. So we're gonna have nineteen total.
Nineteen total.
Yeah. And I'll say that initially, when I started to draft the budget, I had eighteen in there. We truly should be at eighteen.
How many are we short right now, Rob?
Uh, we're, so out of the sixteen positions we have, we've got four that are open.
Four are open?
Right now. So we're running with twelve.
Constantly hiring.
Yeah, it's, I, we're, and we're making some stretches in our hiring, you know, people that we're familiar with, so we kind of know what to be looking for.
Right.
You know, they come with some experience. It's a little bit easier to try and train them and get them on the floor and going right away. Um, yeah, it's, it's gonna be a, a theme that you'll hear once we get our final inspection report from the DOCR is established.
Such a turnover we've had due to the pandemic, different on the community.
Yeah, oh, it's, the pandemic, a way to change the leadership within corrections. You know, so there's, uh, there's, some people are, are loyal to, to the individual that's no longer there, and then we have people that are adjusting well to the, the different level of expectation that are now in place, and we're out there, go somewhere else. You know, the, the salaries, we did do a one and a half percent increase of the salaries and the pay scales uh, to get in line with what the market rate is for twenty twenty, so I guess we're kind of behind the ball to get a little bit on that.
We are.
Yeah, well, it's, because that's the information we had, was the, the rate we did in twenty twenty, so we're trying to get that up to speed for twenty twenty-one. But then when I'm looking at a budget like this, and I, and, you know, the, the shortfall that's there, that makes it difficult too because I know that, you know, we gotta be aware of, of the, the ratifications financially. And our, the cost of incarceration is only gonna go up. The amount of mental health and, and, uh, mental illness that we're seeing within the facility right now, we, we, we almost should have our own full-time behavioral health professional on staff. And we, you know, just last month, we had an individual who literally took a pencil, broke it up, and shoved the whole pencil in their arm. After we had it removed, had to take them to the ER to have it removed, and they didn't get it all. A lot of rejected partners who were able to get it out, then they started chewing on their arm. So then we put them in the restraint chair. Like, that's what we do. We put them in a restraint chair, and then we watch them. That's not helping anybody.
Let me ask you this question. Is there anybody locally that has that type of degree that you know of?
I've had conversations with some people, and I don't know that we would get anyone locally to provide the level of services that we need. We would probably have to try and contract, like with Prayer St. John's or something, to do telemed.
Do you think that's a possibility?
Yeah, I've had conversations with Prayer St. John.
They would come? They would send somebody? To live here then, or just?
No, it would be telemed. Most of it, I mean, they, you could get them to come on site a few times a month, I'm sure, but the majority of it would be done through telemed.
Do you think that would work?
It'd be better than what we're doing.
Yes.
I mean, that's, one of the things that's on the reentry side, and we probably won't talk about reentry too much, is that the community service program has dissolved, and we're taking that up under the LEC. So that'll be part of our reentry budget. Uh, and with that position, I'm, part of the responsibilities is gonna be providing some case management within the jail to try and do some screenings, uh, when we identify people who maybe need to have screenings done or assessments done, and then get them connected to services, whether it's get them connected so when they get out, they can get to services, or to try and get somebody to come in and provide services. If they're, if they meet the requirements of a human service center for them to come in and do that.
I mean, you know, there's two things here. Nine-one-one, we gotta fix costs. We pretty much know what's gonna cost to have people man nine-one-one, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. I mean, it's not gonna change much other than wages do up.
Correct.
Law enforcement, I mean, we have a whole list of stuff that's going on, and costs. Are we paying enough in labor to get quality people to be, what they, officers in there?
Uh, and that's, I, I think we're at an okay spot, you know, I, but then again, I haven't really gotten to look locally to see what's out there. You know, like I, I, my future son-in-law just got here, and I don't know, the leading edge, start at eighteen an hour. We start out our seals at seventeen, twenty. So, and when you're looking at the, the schedule and the environment that our, that our people are working in, our benefits are better. So, you know, there's that, but then you try to tell that to the twenty-something-year-olds that are out there.
Yeah, bitch, eh, bitch, eh, bitch.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you could just wait, yeah.
Well, that, I mean, you could work at a lot of different places in town now, running a till or something like that for fourteen, fifty bucks an hour. It's a lot less of a headache.
They can't just.
I know, and they can't without people. And, and that's.
Some of yours.
Yeah, and, and that's part of my concern, not, I understand why, why you're looking at the kitchen, but is it gonna be more of a labor breaker where you're trying to keep that staff too?
Rather review inmates.
Yeah, there'll be inmate labor. So we would be looking at contract, like with Summit Foods, who does a lot of the facilities. They come in, they would provide the civilian labor, uh, and the actual food, and then we would provide inmate labor to help out with the operations.
Yeah, it was the same way.
Yeah, so we're, we're paying, we're paying thirteen fifty per inmate per day for meals right now. And we can get that down to probably between five and six bucks for inmate per day through a contract with a company like that.
You think we're gonna teach inmates work ethic by giving them jobs like this?
I have no problem.
Can't hurt, can?
And there's some other things that we really need to do with the facility as far as looking at an expansion. And I was, I'm gonna give an update to the board in the morning, but I had an architect that came in, we walked around, kind of looked at what we're talking about. Uh, and so to try and see about doing a study on feasibility of doing an expansion. Uh, and so he got back to me and a study over around ninety to a hundred thousand dollars. And they did a study for Grand Forks County on their expansion, so I reached out and read over there uh, and asked him if he thought there was value in it. My board will get their letter tomorrow. Uh, I copied what he responded, and he said that basically, I could've told him everything in there, but there's more value coming, for, coming from a third party.
You can't just run theirs off and use theirs.
I've got it, so.
Ninety to a hundred thousand for a study.
For a study. So I think we have some flexibility in looking at maybe doing something.
Didn't the school just, uh, hire an architect to do a study of their facilities for ten thousand?
Uh, and this, this, this was one that was recommended to us by, uh, an engineer that we use for our, our, uh, surveillance and security project. And they, they do correctional facilities.
Yeah, I buy that, okay.
Jason. So on the LEC side, again, if you look at the, the, uh, joint powers, cost share revenues, uh, and the majority of the expenses, they increase theirs due to the food service costs and then the labor costs.
This is not gonna cost more money. That's all there is to it.
The, the one thing too that I wanna kind of finish on is, you know, we've established that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is kind of the number we wanna have in our checking account. So the plan is, is when we hit December this year, if we have surplus over that, then we'll come, I'll come to the board at our December board meeting with the recommendations on what to do with that additional money. And my first number one recommendation is gonna apply it to the twenty twenty-two budget and reduce that cost share number. That's the way that I feel that it should be spent. But there's gonna be options too to consider whether or not we wanna kick it into nine-one-one. I know there's gonna be an argument for that. Uh, we need a cab for nine-one-one, um, you know, there's gonna be a call log that we're gonna need for nine-one-one. So those are some expenses that might be coming down too. The problem with that then is that, you, the cost share formula, when you look at the percentages on the cost share in the LEC and compare it to the nine-one-one side, they're vastly different. So how do you figure out how to transition that money over and apply it to everybody equally and fairly? So, and just, uh, we were, we're sitting at eight hundred thirty thousand dollars as of the end of May in our checking account. So right now, we're eighty thousand dollars above that, that number.
Sounds like we gotta shape the money tree a little bit.
About two years ago, we were the other way, not that much, but, you know, considerably, uh, too much.
Yeah.
That's good, that, but yeah, but it's just, law enforcement, we're in jail, I was just out of sight, and you're just, I don't know. I'll be taking it different, I don't know. I'd be guessing.
There's gotta be something better, right? All that, nothing against the work you guys do. I mean, the work that the people at the law enforcement center do is, is top-notch, but there's gotta be a better way. Just asking.
What else, Rob?
That's all I got, really. I mean, the nine-one-one, or the reentry side is basically just off of contract revenues. I did just find out, we put a request into the DOCR for consideration for a rate increase, and we're not, yeah, I got denied, we're not getting anything. So they're at sixty-one, seventy-five a day. Our actual cost at reentry when we're fully staffed is eighty-nine-one a day. And we've requested an increase to get to seventy-five, and we didn't get a three percent.
Didn't get three percent.
Didn't get a three percent. So again, my, my.
So is this, this COVID money that we're looking at, is that something because of the COVID that could be used on that kitchen? I mean, I don't know.
Possibility, possibility. I mean, if.
If it would be.
Figure out how we can access that money.
Yeah.
Use it.
That would be.
How to do it.
Yeah, we, we have some inclination as to how we're gonna be able to be used, but it's not set as soon yet, so we'll, we'll, see. And I think we have through something like mid twenty twenty-four, December, maybe one twenty twenty-four or something, so. We have a little bit of time, so.
Time, but, you know, we don't, definitely don't wanna wait till.
No, no, of course not. But I mean, if we, if it's something that we can utilize it for, it's definitely something we'll have to look at.
Any questions, any comments? Okay, all, so I, the city's only one I haven't been to, I've been to everybody else, and Eddie County, uh, Nansville County, Nelson County, asking some questions to help educate the tour board a little bit more. Eddie County had a few things to say, but Benson County, I know, like, it's a lot of information. You know, I deal with it every day, so I know it inside and out. Uh, but if you have questions, comments, anything, more than happy to hear them.
Thoughts or insights on Thursday's meeting with the city?
I, I just, I'd like to know what to expect so I can be ready.
Well, I guess we'd like to know what to expect as well.
I suggested to Rob make sure of agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, so with the two getting together, we actually end up with a quorum on my board, so I have to have an agenda too. Uh, the one thing I talked to Candy a little bit about too is that if there's gonna be discussion on the nine-one-one side, that's gotta be separately listed because it is a separate board.
A separate then.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's under the LEC umbrella, it's still separate.
Yeah.
I don't have any idea. I mean, I've been in the Americas, watching anybody else.
Because I imagine this is gonna come up. I mean, the board, the, the, the budget's obviously gonna be the, the talking point.
Oh, yeah, I assume so. What, I guess I'm kind of, I, I know we have a meeting, but I'm kind of in the dark. How, how was the meeting put together?
It was, uh, yeah.
So, I think I.
You guys didn't ask that question.
So I, I. So I, I, I talked a little to, to.
I just wanted to know.
To Terry, Mayor Johnson, to Jeff, to Candy, Bo, and Tom Trainor, just saying, you know, we're working on the joint power, but we, we need to get this separate agreement regarding the property and everything taken care of first. Can we try to set up a meeting? Uh, and then there was a response from Terry saying that they want to call a joint commission meeting to discuss it. So then that's, that's.
That's kind of a, okay, because I was, yeah, I wasn't sure if we were talking specific things for this coming year, if, if this was supposed to be around the offices of talking about how we're breaking down the, you know, the agreement that we've been kind of talking about, or, you know.
So like, I've requested.
What, what it was all gonna be for.
I requested to be on their agenda on the seventh for their meeting to go over the budget and stuff and talk LEC, and they didn't let me on the, on the agenda for LEC this, uh. So that's where I think that they're gonna want to talk budget and the other things as well.
All we can use.
Make sure we have a discussion.
Yeah. Well, and then I saw that on the, on the agenda, you have the community development block grant on there. Was there something that you got saying that we're getting awarded those funds? Okay. That's been, the last couple of weeks have been a pain in my, pain in my side too, because they, they, we made a payment towards our console furniture, and they may say when we took that as a payment towards the center project. Because we can't expend any funds until we get the appropriation from them, so they pulled it. I got a letter saying, you're not getting your grant funds now. And so I've been spending the last two weeks trying to get that in our notes, so I'm glad to see that.
I, I appreciate your communication with me on that.
Yeah.
Two separate things, uh.
Two separate things, and it was, it, it was just a miscommunication on, on a few different ends, and I think it's all worked out, and obviously because the fund was at least correct.
Yeah, once we, once we sign February.
Is that too quick an email, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was one day, one day I get a letter, and then fifteen minutes later, I get a phone call, hold that letter. Don't share, okay? So.
Okay, any, any questions at any point in time, shoot me emails, any calls, move by the office. Okay. Thank you.
Well, hang on a second, Rob. Thursday's agenda, I think, uh, can we work that out now?
Sure.
I, I think that having the discussion on ownership of the building, um, you know, that would be the main thing that needs to be ironed out, isn't it, Bo?
Yeah, that's a big one, and the, the property, if it were to be dissolved, who gets what?
Yeah. And, and I think the discussion should be limited to that.
All right.
Okay.
Don't you think, Ed?
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, then, there isn't any question about these, or, you know, issue about dissolving the building, isn't there?
Not, not to my knowledge, it's more of a. No, what puts you out to have it in there in case something were to happen at some point? Yeah.
I'm sure they'll have jail here.
And I do, I do have Howard Swanson, our attorney's gonna be after meetings.
Oh, wonderful, great, thank you. And Bo said he'd clear his schedule and.
See you Thursday, Rob.
Yeah.
Do we have the joint powers agreement on there as well?
Yeah.
What'd you say, Candy?
Joint powers agreement.
Yeah, if there's any questions or concerns, I think for the joint powers, that makes sense to be part of that as well.
Sounds good, great.
Yep, that's true.
And I, and I think that would be a.
Who's, who's running the meeting?
Well.
I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm not asking that, he's just saying, I mean, who's gonna run it, because then we have to stay on the agenda.
Because the city wanted to have the meeting, and then they asked me for dates. And then I pretty much got told that I had to produce an agenda.
Okay, well.
You got told?
Cool, that's fine, just like, they told us we're in charge of the agenda, then we're in charge of the agenda, what do you say?
Can you, Rob, I think.
But yet he has to do.
Why, you two to work together on that agenda?
Agenda as well, because he has a form of a board as well, so. That's why I kind of.
Everybody needs a agenda.
And you've, you've extended that invitation to all the LEC members.
Yes, yes, and, yeah, Nancy will be there, Dave won't be able to make it, but he's gonna remote it. I'm gonna set up so you can remote it.
All right. So, and we're hosting the meeting, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's your building, you're in charge of it.
If you're running a meeting, then I don't have a commission's running.
I'll need a bigger hammer.
Well, I would, I, I would say it's, it, yeah, it depends on what the, what the, you know, is it a Ramsey County Commission meeting that we're kind of running, or is it an LEC meeting, then one of you would. So it doesn't matter.
Can you send me your agenda? Yeah, I'm on your list already anyway, but I want to do the agenda, okay?
You two can have on the agenda.
Yeah. I've got a board meeting right away in the morning, so.
It'll work, it'll work.
Okay.
Thanks, Rob.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Rob. All right. Next up, discussion on Second Amendment, St. Seward County. We had a group of individuals approach, uh, and the county and asked if we put this on our agenda and allow them some time to talk and follow what the state and what some other surrounding counties have done. We had put together a proclamation, and I don't know if Mark and Terry, and have you seen the proclamation? It, it's basically ver, basically verbatim of the states and what Nelson County has done, um, except it says Johnson County. And, so with that, Terry, uh, you wanna, I don't know.
Well, it'll be a lot simpler than what you guys are just going through.
Yeah, absolutely.
But it's, it's one of those things, it's just a reinforcement, it's nothing, you know, reinforcement of what the government, government have done, what some of the surrounding counties have done. You know, it's just a, kind of, not really, you know, it's not really gonna change a whole lot, it's just a, a statement more.
Right. A, a statement of support.
Right.
That, that's how I view a proclamation. Other discussion, questions? Commissioners have any thoughts? Entertained a motion to either move forward with it, table it?
Well, can I, can I just ask questions? Because I, I feel like I just don't, I don't, I don't understand. You know, like, I, genuinely, I know that, right, you know, what you will all take from this is that I'm some crazy liberal.
No.
Right? But I know that that's what will happen, but that's okay. I just, I just want to understand what this accomplishes. Right? Like, I, I guess, I understand that it's a statement of support, but, you know, unless the Second Amendment changes, which would take a vote of three fifths of the states or a three fifths majority in the House and Senate, right?
Right.
I mean, unless the Constitution changes, the Second Amendment is and will always be the Second Amendment, right? And, and that.
That's true, but look what's gonna have to be the First Amendment already. Look at the books that have been banned. Look at the stupid books like Dr. Seuss, they're saying are.
The, the government didn't ban that.
Well.
Dr. Seuss, the publishing company, and, and then, so then, so then there's another question, right? So let me ask you a question about that specifically. Do businesses not have a right to do business the way they choose?
Yeah, they can do business the way they want.
So, right, so if I'm the business that publishes the Dr. Seuss books, and I decide I don't want to publish Dr. Seuss books, isn't that not right?
No, you're right.
Okay, so then I don't see how that's the government. And I guess in this case, I mean, short of, short of expecting that the county is gonna do what? I mean, I've read all the terms of this, right, and it says that, you know, to protect firearm businesses from frivolous litigation. Well, what, what is that? I mean, does that mean that any firearm business that gets sued in Ramsey County, that the county's gonna agree that we're gonna protect them from frivolous lawsuits? Does that mean protect them from the damages? Because I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't know what this, this means, because it says a bunch of stuff, right? Stand against federal overreach. Who should, who should be standing against it? Is it the sheriff? Because he's an organ of the state, right? The sheriff.
Sheriff's an elected official.
Which is an organ of the state, right? He enforces the state's laws.
Laws, we don't have laws.
Right? I mean, so, so, you know, it's, even if, even if the commission declared next week that, you know, nobody can own a firearm, well, that would be meaningless too, right?
Because it'd be tough to do.
Well, we could, we could proclaim anything, right?
It would, it would be unconstitutional.
But no, but, no, but it'd just be a proclamation, right? So, right, so, but, but so I guess what I'm saying is, is, you know, i- if it's not the sheriff who's gonna protect the, the stand up to federal overreach, is it the staff of the courthouse? Like, is it, is it, if, you know, if the feds roll into town, let's say hypothetically, in the, in the nuclear Armageddon scenario we're talking about, right, where somehow, through some backdoor deal, the feds somehow outlawed something relating to firearms. Well, we already know that, one, it would get struck down by the Supreme Court, right? And even if somehow it didn't, it would be the feds coming to take them.
Right.
So the sheriff's an organ of the state, he's gonna follow what the state's gonna do. Does that mean that we need to put Kevin in, in line with the feds when they're coming to? Because, you know, he's the only staff member, well, I mean, he's in the courthouse. I, I guess I do sort of decide what he does, right? Is that, is that what that means to stand up? Or is it, is it the commission? Like, do we, do we allow everybody to stash their firearms in the courthouse? You know, if the feds come? I guess, I guess I'm just, I know that this sounds meaningless to you all, and I know I own firearms. You know, I own firearms, but I don't know what this is for. You know, it's like, it's like calling.
It's more or less just a statement.
And it's like calling shotgun when you're running to the car against your bigger, stronger older brother, right? In the end of the day, you're not gonna have any say over whether you spend the firearm.
Terry, what were you gonna say?
I think it's just a statement of, that we show support, you know, that we are, we do, we do support the sportsmen, we do support, you know, firearm own, ownership, and that we're just not, you know, it's not that we're against anything, it's not that we're for anything, it's just a statement to say, hey, this is how we feel, you know? It's not, you know, we make a statement every day, we get up and go to work, and then, oh, shoot, I hate my job, well, it's a statement, you know, but this is just a statement to say, hey, we kind of support the Second Amendment.
Sure, and, and this may be a weird line to walk, but I will claim that I, Lucas Wakefield, support the Second Amendment, and I'm gonna vote against this when it comes up. Right? I mean, I'm just telling you, maybe that, maybe I'm the only one to see the distinction.
But, no, you took an oath of office here, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, and to support the Constitution of the United States. Yeah, and that's all you're doing here, is that you're supporting the Constitution of the United States. No difference in the old people with the office.
So can, can we just proclaim that we support the entire Bill of Rights instead?
Sure.
I mean.
I mean, you can.
Yeah, I mean, do you, would that, would that accomplish the same thing? The Second Amendment is one of the amendments. Right? So we could just support the entire Bill of Rights, I'd feel more comfortable with that.
Do that.
We can just go ninety miles, ninety short mile to the north here, and those people up there don't have any weapons. Their weapons are all locked. They have weapons.
No.
Yes, they do, they just have to, they just have to secure them. I'll make a motion, we support this.
I second.
And then we have a motion, we have a second to go ahead and support this? All right.
Is it okay if I say this? It's just, just my thought process. I, I, I'm not necessarily echoing what Lucas is saying, but I appreciate everybody bringing this forward. I, I respect you all, but I, I'd have to vote against it too simply because of too many unknowns. And here's, here's where I'm coming from. When, when, when the agenda came out last Thursday, Friday, I don't remember. I saw it was on the agenda, so I sat down and I started doing some research. And I haven't, I'm not as immersed in the Second Amendment probably, but there's some very interesting back information about the court proceedings and everything, and how the Second Amendment has moved forward from the Bill of Rights in seventeen ninety one, I believe it was, is when it passed, all the way up to today. And the concepts between the militia collective arms rights versus individual arm rights, how, and I'm not a lawyer, so I will readily admit that right out front, so our lawyer can yell at me if I say something wrong, but. In nineteen thirty four, the Supreme Court decided that it was a collective arms rights versus an individual arm rights. Now, that changed in two thousand and eight when the D.C. ban on handguns was then struck down. So it's an individual arm right kind of thing. The question I have in this situation specifically is, you're saying it's symbolic, and I'm not saying it's not necessarily symbolic or not symbolic, the problem is, is right now, we don't know if it's symbolic, because it's actually being litigated right now in the federal courts in Oregon, questioning, is it symbolic or is it not symbolic? Does this actually hold power, or does it not hold power? So in passing this with being blind, not knowing if it holds power or not, what are we actually signing up for? Are we then signing up for essentially the question of, there's, you say that we, we have an oath of office, and I don't disagree, we have an oath of office, we, we stood in front of the room, we said, I'm gonna uphold the Constitution of the State of North Dakota in the United States. Under law, under statute, under how, how, how case law works, there's something called supremacy of law. Supremacy of law means that the state follows the feds, instead there's other things, but we follow the state. It's the closest move up, correct? Correct. So state law has a chapter in the North Dakota Century Code, chapter sixty two. Chapter sixty two of the North Dakota Century Code lays out all of the firearms ownership guidelines and everything that happens with it. So then are we essentially saying that we are no longer, if they, if, if the court order then comes down and says, these have binding resolution, we're unconstitutional at that point? Because then we are saying we are no longer following the North Dakota Constitution, because we're not gonna do, we're not gonna support concealed carry, background checks, any of the things that the North Dakota Constitution, or not Constitution, excuse me, the Century Code lays out in chapter sixty two. That's where I have a concern. Uh, I, I just, I want clarity on what exactly we're signing up for. I'm not saying that I'm against the Second Amendment, I'm a gun owner as well. But what are we signing up for in stating this? Because if it's merely symbolic, okay, it's merely symbolic, but we don't know it's merely symbolic. And that's where I have a concern. Um, you know, i- is it, when you're, when you're talking about federal statute moving down through the states, through the counties, we don't make laws here. We have policies, we have some ordinances, um, but all of those ordinances, all of those policies, well, not policies, all of those ordinances are derived from the power that the state invests within the county to pass those ordinances. We don't have any power unless the state gives us that power. So that's my only concern, is, is what are we signing up for when we don't specifically know what this is saying until sometime in the future? And, and we don't know when that's going to be at this point in time. That, that's essentially my, my thought process of it. I'm not saying that I'm opposed to the Second Amendment, I'm not saying any of that. I'm just saying that it's always tough for me to vote for something or make a decision completely blind, not knowing what the result of that decision is going to be going forward in the future. Are we opening the county up to possible litigation? Are we, are we, uh, you know, talking about, you know, uh, issues of, of constitutionality? I, I, and again, I'm not a lawyer, but that's just things that have rambled around in my brain in the last three or four days, and then the research I've done.
The, the federal government is against marijuana, right?
They don't have the DEA, yes, there's, there's, I wouldn't say they're against, but there's still laws of, of, yeah, correct, correct.
Look at all the states that have gone and made marijuana legal already.
Yes.
So, I mean, you're, are they following the up rule of law? No.
Well, they are, they are, the law that doesn't transport across state lines, right? The, the federal authority goes to.
There's interstate versus interstate, and, and, yeah, I mean, I, I know where you're coming from, I don't disagree.
I'm, I know, so it's, you know, there's so. So, it's, you know, there are so many different ways a person can look at this that it's unreal.
No, I know, and I, I don't disagree with that statement at all, I mean-
I mean, I just brought it up so we could see, so it'd be a discussion, so a person could talk about it and see what they'd say, you know?
Well, I, I don't think it, it, it doesn't create any legal binding of, of law for anything. Even a presidential proclamation does not have any legal binding authorization unless authorized by Congress. It, it's a-
Proclamation, yes, probably, but an executive order, things of that nature, dependent upon the situation, do have power and binding.
Exactly, and that's not what this is. This isn't an ordinance, this isn't a, a law, we're not creating a, this is a proclamation, which-
It's a part of the-
In support of, you know, it kind of, I, a proclamation in support of October being Breast Cancer Awareness Month. You know, something to that effect. It, it's, it, it doesn't legally bind us, i- in my viewpoint.
Like they say, October.
You know?
You know, that's the breast month. But this is the same thing.
But, but they're-
One line here to President Biden and the United States Congress, and an oath of intention for some of these that want to turn on the right to keep her bare eyes.
Right.
I think we all know that's true.
But it also makes a completely political statement, right? You know, what, what, but what, what, but what happens, what happens when we're still as, uh, you know-
Controlled by presidency and Congress when changes?
Change what?
Second Amendment.
Well, they can't, they can't change this constitution.
Right, and, and even if, see, because like, here's, here's the thing, right? This is totally just a proclamation up to the time when hypothetically, I don't believe it'll ever happen, ever actually. But until such time as the Constitution were amended, and for whatever reason the Second Amendment were struck from it. Then at that point, what happens to everybody that's proclaimed that they're a sanctuary? Right, so, because, because, so this is, I mean-
No different, no different than sanctuary cities that claim for illegals.
It is very different.
It's very different, actually.
It, no, it's totally different, because you're, you're basically saying, you're basically saying that, that in, in the state of North Dakota or in the county of Ramsey, the federal, if the Second Amendment were ever struck, that, that, striking of that does not apply here. Which, I don't know, I don't know what that would mean. Does that mean that, that the state of North Dakota is now in a state of rebellion? I don't, I don't, no, I don't understand what-
It's been a state of rebellion for a long time.
And it may be, and, and I don't mean to seem so pedantic.
No, I don't.
I know, I know where you guys are coming from.
Yeah.
I totally get what you're saying.
I think the problem is, is, is when we talk about overreach and things of, sorry to interrupt, but overreach and things of that nature, is we have quality gun owners here, that we know are good gun owners. And then all of the laws are written for the people that are not good gun owners. And we know that, it's no different than any law, unfortunately. But, it, it's just, I don't know, I, I struggle to put it that way.
Well, I guess, unless anyone else has anything else they'd like to say, I'll, I'll just close by saying, I, Lucas Wakefield, do support the Second Amendment. I believe that the Second Amendment should remain in the Constitution. And I, I'm still gonna vote no, and I hope that you understand why. It has, has everything to do with, I don't know what I'd be signing Ramsey County up for, maybe nothing, maybe something. But I don't think I'm smart enough to understand exactly what it might be.
I'm not either, that's why I'm guiding the corner, and there's ones known of all.
And so, I'm, I, I'm gonna vote against it, but I want you to understand why. And I really appreciate Adam for everything he said, because he explained kind of my thoughts on it very eloquently. My worries on it, I should say. And, Mr. Chair, I call a question.
Question's been called. Proceed with the roll call vote, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
No.
Volk?
Aye.
Leipon?
Nay.
Brett?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I appreciate the comments.
Sell a lot of trees?
I'm not, I'm not.
I'll have to come by somewhere, I have to put on the deck.
You stay home, send your wife.
Oh.
Come on, Mark.
Alright, Kevin.
First of all, I'm over the little project we got going on right now. We did get done fixing the soft spots, we took the hunting unit back and, they actually turned out really good this year. There's probably some that we didn't get done, but we got a bunch of them done. Uh, favorite patches, they're gonna start on those tomorrow morning. They're gonna do the one where the open type trench, when we put the culvert in, they're gonna do that first, and then four or two, drop it, finish up. Then they're talking about coming back later to do round three. Because I don't think they put it all on their schedule. Uh, chip seal, that's supposed to be starting Thursday. That generally goes pretty fast, so then by the weekend that should be done. That's a chip seal that I handed in, Ramsey nine over by. Left, east side of the county, northeast part of the county. And they're also starting our mag water today. It's gonna, a little bit slower process this year, they're just using a smaller truck to do it, but they didn't start today. Uh, any questions on the projects that are going on?
Keep up the great work.
Yeah. Oh, and then Soper, I took the gravel sample from Soper today, so they'll probably be starting the gravel road. By certain weather, it goes a piece in the west there, probably the first part next week. So, everything's happening at once. Quite good, yeah. Sorry, what, there's everybody looking?
Time to get rolling. Got to get done before that five inch ring comes.
Yeah. So, any question on the projects we got? Okay, and then I just figured, on the mag water pen, I just figured doing in front of all the homes where people live, and that total cost, total cost will be around fifty-seven hundred dollars. You guys had asked me to put the price together, what that would be. So, I don't know if you want to pursue that, or what your thoughts there are.
What's the length of it, Kevin, approximately?
Well, there's probably five, six people that live there and
Quarter mile?
Oh, okay, uh, it's about, must be close to a mile, three quarters, yeah.
I just question if we set the bad precedent.
I do.
Simply because if, if, if we do decide to go along, but I'm not saying it's not necessarily necessary. I mean, it probably would be very good for the roads in there. But then, are we gonna start paying for the roads in that boring lot? Every place also that has gravel, that they would like to have some of that put down? And, and, uh, uh, ma- like I said, may, maybe it would be something where we, we tell them we're not gonna do it this year, but we come up with some type of an idea on maybe some type of a cost share or something to help the cities out, if that's something where they'd like to see something where it was, I mean, I don't think we need to cost share at the level that we do on the county roads.
Right.
But I think it would be maybe reasonable to look at a cost share type of situation, help them submit the roads staying shaky, if that's how.
At least, maybe, uh, offer them an, an option, come up with the co- cost share, and, and whether or not that city, you know?
My biggest fear on it is, if the road isn't prepped correctly, it'll happen like the road doesn't prep it. A couple of years it was awesome, and then there was a couple of years where they didn't prep it before they put it down. And that road was so rough, and holes like this, and then they went to go up and try to blade it, and it was like concrete. And it was, it was pulling up stuff like this, and they finally got it shaped back up after a year and a half or two years, but I don't know how many times they went out there to blade it and busted it up. You know, there can be reason not to do it, if they don't prep it correctly, it, it can cause damage highly.
Well, yeah, but a cracked parole road is a good example, too.
Yeah, they didn't, there was a couple of years where they did an awesome job, and then they got, the people that put it down got ahead of the blade guy.
That's, that's just the timing issue, we're not saying-
They didn't get enough rain to prep it really good. So, it, it created, it's like pavement with just holes like that.
Well, a spring like this spring would be a really good example, where if we had had a wet fall, where the roads hadn't been prepped really well last fall, and then we would've come into this dry spring, you wouldn't have been able to move dirt around or anything, you would've had some really tough roads coming in. But at least last fall was long and decent, we got a pretty good shape.
But then that's my fear, if it doesn't get prepped right, they'll come back and say, well, you put this on, so are you gonna come back and fix it? Are you gonna come and get back and get these bladed? You know, we could create more waves too, but, I mean, what is that having to do?
What do we share on the county road, twenty-five percent?
Uh, we pay seventy-five.
We pay seventy-five, they pay twenty-five.
And townships are, been a hundred percent on their own.
Yes.
And, yep, and, and these are all unincorporated village, you know, actually-
Township roads.
Actually township roads.
So, it's unincorporated.
Right. Pan and Webster.
Yeah, Pan and Webster, yeah.
Churches for areas.
Well, churches for areas of the area, yeah.
Most of them.
Yeah, after township roads, you almost have to stay to the same guidance, if we're gonna open it up, we almost have to, you know, stay to, so be in the township, want something with a cost share.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think we'll see a lot more people want it for, and if we have some kind of cost share, I feel like the residents are invested in, okay, yeah, we actually wanna help out pay for this, so.
And, and, and I think it'd be who the, the residents, or subdivision, a unincorporated town to have a hundred percent, you know, and, and low cost share if there's a hundred percent buy-in on it. Because you get ten people and seven of them say yes, and the three benefit from the seven paying their share. So, yeah.
Yeah, they got, they gotta do the arm twisted locally, they need people on board, they don't have to do it anywhere.
We got the information now, somebody got the parts, we all have this.
Okay, we'll just move on then. Next month we'll start our bridge removal, so we need to rent an excavator and a trench pack for a couple of months. Uh, we're starting that pretty up to July fourth, August, so it'll be in July sixth. And Ironhide has the best rates, so it's forty-five hundred dollars a month for the excavator, and twenty-two hundred dollars a month for the packer. And for two months, the total will be thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars.
Will you approve?
Say.
Moved in second, need to go ahead and rent some equipment from Ironhide. Um, thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, don't shoot carries.
And I did get a letter from the railroad, or no, from the state, saying that uh, our south of crossing has been approved for signal lights and crosshairs. Other than signal lights are already, but anyway, crosshairs. And it's scheduled for the twenty, twenty-two season, and I will be responsible, ten percent of that.
How much is that?
Um, I budgeted fifteen thousand, that's our share.
Well, worth it, not bad.
The last three reasons.
Well, worth it, yeah. Hopefully we get you out to some day.
Right. So, that's just for information, no, no motion up there. Um, Royal Township, they have two different culverts that rusted out, forty-eight inch arch culverts that rusted out on the bottom, and when that happens, they buckle up like that, and that's typical of when they start caving in, so we need to get those replaced. And the two, the two holes are gonna cost eleven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty cents.
Will you approve?
Motion and a second to go ahead and replace the forty-eight inch culverts in the Royal Township. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign.
And just more of a heads up again, we did get a price increase for our dollars from June steel. But their increase is still less than what the, our second quote was, so we'll still be getting dollars from them, that's just the heads up.
Do you remember what the increase, how percentage was?
About two bucks a foot, on percentage, yeah, I don't know, what about two bucks a foot?
What's usually cost a foot, just for curiosity?
Eighteen inches now, like twenty dollars a foot, that was like eighteen dollar foot, give or take. I don't know, I guess just to mention, can you try to let you guys know that two, July twenty-first, from the NACO Association, it's gonna be here, so.
The president's tour.
Actually, they still have a motion.
Yeah.
It's kind of front of time, three o'clock, but.
That's an aye, no?
No, no, this is just the president's tour for the association.
County Commission Association and, uh, North Dakota Association of Counties.
I served as a past president this year, so I bet someone would have been there.
I'm sure Commissioner Dick from Cablar County give us an update next week. Currently the president of NACO, isn't he?
Yep. So, I have.
Thank you, Kevin.
New business, library board appointment. We need a commissioner to fill that position. Remind us, Lucas, how often they meet?
Once a month.
Once a month, generally at what day, what time?
They're looking to change it.
Okay.
So, I'm not totally sure, previously it would've been, uh, Monday at ten AM. Uh, so, you know, so, Tuesday, second, second Monday of the month.
You're willing, you're kind of thinking of changing it, I don't know?
Pass it around the doodle pole amongst the people that are on it right now, to try to decide? I don't know, I-
The commissioner has a limit on that position?
Has to be a commissioner.
Has to be a commissioner, I mean-
We had a discussion at the last meeting, this is-
And there's, and there's term one, correct?
No, there are terms, two terms, state requires a-
Two, two, four.
Two, three.
Can I name you and put you in?
Alright.
Change your real initial?
I've already put six years under that, or somebody else could have.
Lucas was a library board member, hired in the commission, so.
Which probably technically puts me in violation anyway, but, nobody else, and also I'm off it now, so it's not- I nominate Commissioner Lighton. You could, approval?
I guess I don't have a choice. I'll do it if, if, but I'll have to see, we might have to, maybe I'll, I'll flip you something that I'm on.
Fair enough, I'm happy to do it.
We'll talk about it.
Was that, if you wanted?
Let's, let's do it.
I, I'd be willing to do it, it's just, as long as they're not jumping from day to day, that's, like, if they get Thursday, for the end of the week, it's trouble for me because they put me on guard again. If it's, if it is in the beginning-
The board that's on there right now is very strong-willed, so they, they're basically gonna decide what they're gonna decide.
Yeah, I- That's the only thing that I would have commitments already, you know?
And, and I don't know what they're gonna decide.
That's the only issue I would have with it.
We'll find another board for you then.
Maybe you can take it or I do, there you go. I'll take it for now, if that's, if, that's fine, I'll take it for now, and then a little bit for the couple cut.
You take your kid, one of your kids are-
There you go, well, this person's like, they're read.
I think it would be enjoyable to do it.
That's a great board, I've always loved the library.
So, we have a motion, right? Alright, motion for Commissioner Leipon to fill that position, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, thank you, Commissioner Leipon. Hopefully she doesn't watch you do it.
Next item on the agenda, approve additional security camera. It's come to our attention that we have a blind spot out here, on the northeast corner of the parking lot sidewalk building. And we're gonna get a rotating one similar to the one that we have on the side of the memorial building that'll kinda, and the entrance, the part, part of the parking lot, the sheriff's house.
But uh, I didn't, I see that the package will cost, I remember four hundred, or twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine, forty, eighty-six.
Yeah, I remember.
Fit, and a, fit down to our existing system, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you. Have to be safe around that corner.
Oh, just out of curiosity, I don't know if we have somebody, how many, how many slots do we have left that we can fill in on that, just out of curiosity, say, if we did run into the problem or we might have another blind spot, I didn't see. Cause I know we bought a, a system that has the ability to add some additional cameras. No, I'll just ask Chris.
Yeah.
I'm asking a technical question.
That's one thing I didn't ask him when I was discussing this with him is how many more slots we add.
I, I will say I'm very impressed by the system, I'll be interested in, it's, it's fantastic, so, and then the telephone company's done a good job for us.
The clarity on those cameras is amazing.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
I, I think it's awesome it's got like infrared and stuff too, so it'll just sweep and catch stuff when it goes, it's a good deal.
Yeah, so, alright. Uh, next item on the agenda, raffle permit. Motion to, second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, site authorization, we have six. And these are.
Move it through.
Say.
Site authorization for uh gaming. Motion and a second to approve the six site authorizations, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approve liquor license. We have a rural liquor establishments listed for renewal.
Move it through.
We have a second?
Aye.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the renewal of the liquor license for rural establishments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Um. Discussion and approval on property renewal.
This is the insurance that? Do you see one of those, we're gonna add something?
I think they.
Um, so she visited with us, um. I think we did find out, oh, should change that please, okay. Um, so currently how we have it in our policy is that for every building that we have, we have a deductible for if there is wind and hail. So, switching, switching this, um, the removal, like deductible per building, you know, and just have it as one.
So it's like a, it's like a blanket endorsement?
Right, right, so there, that would be the, you know, the increase to cover, to cover that. So that instead of us, I can't even remember what she, what she probably was per. Per building, it would, I mean, like we'd have to pay a deductible on every single building. Where this is a blanket and it would cover.
So it, then it doesn't take the, takes the deductible away then?
Well, the premium part, each premium.
Premium would cover.
You know, each building, well, we paid the premium on the building, each one's got a deductible, or this would be one premium for all the deductible for a blanket deductible.
So instead of, so hypothetically, there would be a five hundred dollar deductible on each building or something like that, so in this situation, we're paying more premium, but we would just have to pay one five hundred dollar deductible versus twelve, or whatever came on, so, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Right, 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 yeah. Um, the other one, um, was the sewer backup. We.
We can increase the limit from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand.
We, we. Nope, that's the next one, oh, yeah, yeah, but she didn't.
Recommend that?
She didn't really know what we would. Where, I mean.
So we have coverage now?
We have ten thousand dollar worth of coverage? I mean, I could. Uh, just hit the screwback out, it's gonna be in the basement where we're gonna get more than ten thousand dollars, you know, it doesn't take long, we get to ten thousand, but.
Right.
We could just remove the wall of those, but at the best is seventy-five hundred bucks. We don't wanna put a big one, she's houseful, oh.
So that would, from changing it from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand would be?
Five hundred and forty dollars.
Five hundred and forty dollars.
Well, that's a little rare, huh? Can you vote here?
Nope, we're not done yet, we got one more. Um.
Anything else makes a lot of sense, let's do it, Kevin.
So then the, the last one is, um, increased debris removal. Um, so how she explained it was that, um. Okay, something happened to this building.
Like the shoe was cool pop, yeah.
Right, right, yeah, it was just like she said, if like, you know, like a tornado or whatever came through.
Yeah.
And to remove.
Well, yeah, my, my, yeah, my understanding was in reading the note from her was if, if we have a catastrophic event.
Yeah.
Where there was a fire in the building or a tornado came through and we had to then structurally remove the building to build something new. We, we're essentially buying a half a million dollars with a removal coverage.
For thirteen dollars.
For thirteen dollars, which is obviously.
Yeah.
Uh, hopefully we haven't come to that point, but.
Right.
Half a million dollars of coverage for thirteen bucks is pretty, that's a, that's a no brainer, well, you know, if we don't have a tornado.
How many votes should I approve all this?
Say.
Motion and a second to go ahead and approve the removal.
Just, just a quick question, it's not a big deal.
On the hill on the dial?
Um. How many buildings do we own that are, any of them that are within half a mile of each other? Well, like, what I'm saying is, is, like, okay, so you're, you're switching this to be a thousand extra dollars a year, right? But at most, the only two buildings I could think of that are directly adjacent to each other, like we have a shared memorial building and the courthouse, right?
Oh, armor, no.
No, you have, you have the memorial building, you have the sheriff's, you have the courthouse, you have the Webster.
Plus the coming, all the coming show stuff, sheriff's.
So if, so if something happened, I'm like.
Okay.
That's why we have a shop.
I would, I would, I was just thinking about.
So you should have a suite out there.
I was just thinking about how, you know, how many, because that's always the trade-off that you're making, right? Is, the, the odds are very low that you're ever gonna have a claim, right?
That you're.
They know this, I, I sold, I sold eleven years, right, I know how, how it works, right? The odds are very low you're ever gonna have a claim, but they're getting a thousand extra dollars every year from you. Which means that the only way that it's ever gonna save you money is if in the first, you know, however many years you have a claim on like three or more buildings. Well, I guess in this case it'd be two, but if it takes you two years to have two claims, you're still down. I guess that's all, all I'm saying, so like on my own insurance personally, when I make financial decisions, I put my deductible as high as possible, because the, you know, I mean, that lowers my premium and over time that saves me a ton of money. So I get it, I just, that's all, I just wanted to bring that up, not a hill I'm gonna die on, I just, you know.
I, I get where you're coming from, I'm just working from the, the standpoint of the hypothetical where, you know, we've got what? Probably five buildings or six buildings right here in town between here and the county shop, so if something catastrophic were to come through town.
Tornado.
Yeah, tornado or something, I mean, for that extra thousand bucks here.
So it costs, it would cost thirty, so what, how many buildings?
We've got.
They've got four, four or five out there?
Probably seven with search and rescue.
Yep, seven and another two here, I mean, we got nine buildings just between the two spots or something.
Right, so it's, so nine, so it's forty-five hundred dollars. Right, forty-five hundred dollars.
Well, we don't know what's a five hundred dollar, uh, hold on, that's, I just, I, I.
Oh, I thought you were speaking.
No, no, I was not, I was just throwing that hypothetical, it could be a twenty-five hundred dollar.
That's what I was gonna say, cause in that case you have to have a major hailstorm every five years, that'd not be cheaper though.
My guess is, my guess is that the deductible is far higher than five hundred dollars simply because it's property insurance versus like a car.
But.
Let's raise your hand, I'll figure out the deductible.
Dave? Okay. Any other discussion? But now we have a motion and a second, go ahead and approve the, uh, property renewal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, we have board appointments, we have two of them.
We have the two that we're on now.
They, well, that's to be reappointed?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to reappoint.
Uh, I can, who am I reappointing?
Ken Paulson and Kristen Burke.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Ken Paulson, Kenny Paulson and Kristen.
I got it, I got it. We have a motion and a second to approve Mr. Paulson, Mr. Burke for leader board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Tevelo's John. Approve chairman to sign financial award for L E C C D B G grant.
Move it through.
Motion and a second to approve signing the financial award. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Um. Visitors delegations, I think we've got that covered, normal visitors and delegations. Announcements, January meeting with the City of Devils Lake Thursday morning, June seventeen, based in media room, eight thirty.
I have something on that. If you want me to look at something before that meeting specifically, I'm asking you to tell me ahead of time, so I may also look at it before we go in there, cause I wanna make sure we're all moving in the same direction and not getting caught by surprise at that meeting.
Well, I just think the three things that we put as the agenda item, just leave it at that.
What do we have in there?
Ownership of the building, um, and if there is a dissolving, how, how that's gonna be handled, and joint powers agreement.
I think Juanza has copies of all that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So he already has, he already has draft agreements in.
I believe so, Adam, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but he could stand with me proposing rather.
Okay, well, yeah, if he, he has, it'd be nice to have it before the meeting, or if possible.
Maybe Rob can give it a go. Rob has a list of what he's got.
Okay, yeah, if, if, if it's possible to get a previous meeting, just take a look at that.
There was a separate committee on that, working on that, Robbins and Hans Mark or that Rob and.
Was Mike on that?
Mike, yeah, yeah. So I asked Rob, I didn't see that.
Yeah. Good, good idea.
I, I think Rob sent me, has sent me, and I think I have it on my computer, but it may take me a while to find it, and it'd be easier to ask Rob. I'm gonna be out of the office all day tomorrow, so. Any other announcements on Thursday's meeting, any other discussion? Commissioner Grayfield, you'll do coffee time for me tomorrow, correct?
Yep. Save your mind, maybe. Yep.
He had a really quick at his eyes, like, uh, what?
Northeast nine meeting next week.
Yes, Wednesday, I need a head count.
Wednesday?
What day, Thursday?
Uh, Wednesday, the twenty-third.
Is it nine thirty for the coffee?
No, it's seven thirty.
Sorry. Um, hey, I'll, I'll still be there, I just forgot the memory.
So it's.
Northeast at what time?
Five thirty.
Five, five thirty at Armory, twenty-three.
What time do you have?
Roast beef supper by French with carrot bars.
Really?
Well, there's carrot bars, you gotta be there.
For coming to town.
That's right, is it gonna be roast beef?
Yep.
Oh.
For the Northeast nine meeting?
Yeah.
What tells that?
Food.
Oh, you're probably.
Well, I, I think it'll be a good discussion on, on some of these, um.
We've had a lot of big topics to cover.
Updates from, uh, Association of Counties and other topics that will be discussed, so.
State's turn of conference next week, Wednesday through Friday, so I won't be here, so.
Do you listen to roast beef supper?
I know. I've talked to Aaron Burst at Association of Counties for scheduling.
Yeah.
This is.
Yet I'm sure Aaron's gonna be disappointed that he's missing out on this.
That's right, that's my way of asking.
Anything else? Water tour tomorrow morning, uh, we'll start off at the Hofstedt Precision Agriculture Education Center at Lake Ridge and State. Um, registration at eight. Tour of the facility at eight thirty, and then the seat from there around the lake area. And I think we may have one or two open seats on the bus, a fifty-five seat bus, and it's completely, just about completely full, so. Still a lot of interest in the Devils Lake area, people from all across the state are buying on the pen, so. Hats off to North Dakota Water Education Foundation for organizing and taking registrations. With that, uh, meeting adjourned.